Good evening, welcome. This is Town of Rutland Office of the Select Board. This is an off night meeting for us. It is Monday, October 28th at 6:00 PM. We are in the Rutland Free Public Library in the Cable Room. Calling this meeting to order, we are going to go straight to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Again, as usual, our meetings are recorded for transmission on Rutland Public Access Television and on YouTube. The primary reason we are here tonight is just to finalize the Fall Special Town Meeting Warrant and sign it. However, we will go out of order with the one other item on our agenda, which is Other Business. We just have a couple of community announcements to make and a guest here, two guests here from one of those announcements, three guests here from one of those announcements. Who would like to speak on behalf of the Legion? Welcome, gentlemen.
Welcome. Tom Rishaw from Torp and Maple Avenue. I'm the Commander of Legion Post 310 here in Rutland. We wanted to just come before you with two quick things. It came up for the November 11th to do the rededication of the memorial on the Common Outfront, down at Community Hall. The one that Liam did for Eagle Scout Project. So, we want to be aware of that and that's going to take place November 11th at 10:00 AM, right there on the Common. And it's the same project, but along with that, we also want to have you aware and get the public aware and the townspeople aware. We're trying to finish, in conjunction with Liam, the plaque that was going to go on one side of that monument and we need to be sure to get the proper names on there. So, we're asking to anybody that may know of a person or a person that is a veteran that should be on that plaque for recognition, we'd like to make sure we get their names. And the second half of that, from my standpoint, is we would like to know from the post's standpoint, who the veteran's agent that we should be talking to for Rutland, who is that or who should we get a hold of? Because what we want, we have this list, we think it's 100% correct or 99.9 whatever, but we need it checked by somebody that can do that to verify the names for us. So, how do we find that out?
The VSO who we had up until last week is no longer with us at the town. Holden is taking care of us in the interim and we should have a new VSO by Monday.
Okay. So, I can get that name from you then so that we can take that list and Liam was doing. Like I said, we have, he's got a list we got from the previous agent. We think it's correct, but we know there's other names that need to be added to it. So, we want to make sure.
This'll actually be a great community event for our new person to get to know you guys, to get to know the community a little better.
Yes. Do you have, you guys, anything you want to add or did I forget?
Just the date for the plaque is not just every veteran. It's from the date 1990, 2001, whatever the date is.
1990, yeah. I think it's August of 91 or 90. I didn't write it, it's in the paper, I didn't write it down. But it starts with the War on Terrorists. That's what this plaque is going to be.
All right. Thank you so much for everything you're doing for this.
All right. So, I'll change hats now for, on behalf of the Fire Brigade, real quick, just because it's a short, it's kind of a short notice for us too, but the Watch U.S. Area Chamber of Commerce has written to us and told us that they're going to honor us as a community service group. So, I want to make sure everybody knew, so I know you all want to go to breakfast with us, so we're trying to get whoever would like to go to breakfast. It's a week from Wednesday. It's going to be at the Sterling Senior Center, 7:30 AM there. So, you have to go on and register if you'd like to go and we'd love you to go. We thought it was pretty good on it to get and we wanted to make sure we got the word out for that too. If you don't mind, I'll give you these.
Thank you.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, if I may. Tom. Circling back on the Veterans Day dedication, can we maybe meet up with the Legion and myself as a representative from the Board on what we would like to see done for this memorial or the dedication?
Sure.
Could we get together with you folks? And Liam? Okay. Let's talk offline, we'll pick a night and, would that be all right?
Yeah.
Assuming I'm still the representative for the Veterans Day project?
Do you still want to be?
I do.
Oh, good.
I do, that's okay?
Yeah, you got it pretty well put on that list that you had.
Yep.
You got my notes, I wrote down quite a bit of stuff, so.
So, maybe sometime this week would be nice if we could, we'll email or chat or whatever. It'd be fine.
Just let us know.
Thank you all so much.
You guys will be available too.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay with us, eat more candy as we review the warrant. Super interesting.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Mike, did you have to do one more?
Yeah, just a community announcement. Just a reminder that Halloween is on Thursday. Everyone have a safe trick or treat. We'll be doing, we'll be opening the town offices for trick or treating from 2:00 to 4:30 that day for the younger kids who may be too young to go out at night with the older kids or on busy streets. And then the Public Safety Building will be doing their annual Haunting on Main Street Block Party for people to go to from 5:00 to 8:30 as well. So, there are some other events going on in town for people who may not be able to go out during the normal hours.
Excellent. All right. All right, so we're circling back under New Business 055. Time to break out the big white books for the Fall Special Town Meeting Warrant. Mike and I reviewed the order today. The order that you see tonight will not be the order at the meeting, however, because the binders are ordered, we've left it for now. And we can have further discussion about the order, but the general population of residents who come to the meeting are accustomed to a sort of cadence when it comes to the Special Town Meeting relative to the idea that most of the time we've been coming into the meeting either to close out loose ends, make up some things that we weren't able to do in May, find out what the free cash balance is and work off of that. So, we really just sort of shuffled some things around and I think, is there a copy of that, Mike, that you have, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, if anybody wants to see that later. But for now, we're just going to review the way we've been going and what we'll do is unless somebody has to revisit an article that's already been placed, which we will stop at, we will continue to move forward and not re-review things we've already placed unless there was a question, which would mean that tonight, if you look on your list, we would be starting with Page 2, 2.2, not yet placed by the Select Board. We have the two articles that we had some discussion on and then we actually had a very productive meeting last week with the multiple boards, sort of a stakeholders' meeting for this warrant article, excuse me, for these, this entire warrant, and we got some feedback on these. So, is there any preference on the part of the Board relative to appropriating sums of money first for free cash into the Town's Conservation Fund and second is the Agricultural Commission Fund? Those numbers, if you wanted to revisit that, were 3250 each and that was a half percent of the free cash each.
What did we decide the other night amongst the groups? This one had some discussion, right?
We have one person here tonight, or two, that were also at that meeting and one of the comments we got was, you know, do we have other things that are more pressing? Kind of a comment.
CIPC said there's other known needs weren't, they weren't fully on board.
And I'm not sure, I know we have other needs and I know the things we'll be, that we've placed, we're going to have to revisit because of procedures and different board feedback, but I'm not sure with the other needs we have that there is a need. I know we have to start somewhere, but it's just, I would rather if we were going to be placing this, I know we have more attendance at Spring Town Meeting, it might be good to allow more folks to listen and vote on it if we have the cash then, you know?
Step it back.
Push it back?
I think so. I mean, yeah. I mean, that was kind of the feeling of CIPC also and I've got no problem deferring to that.
It's not, it's not one of those things that's exactly into the purview of the CIPC because the money was so small. There is some reference within our financial management policies, particularly for the Conservation Fund and as Mike had indicated the other night, AgCom Fund is not, was not there, was not even a thing when those policies were created and produced. So, probably that's something to, you know, kind of revisit at some point. I could go either way. I think Finance Committee maybe echoed what CIPC was saying to a point, which was, is this a necessity? Of course, no, it's not. We have multiple things on here that are not necessities, you know, technically. So, could go either way.
Plus the fact it's an initial funding of these.
Well, yeah, AgCom has 500 and we see that.
We open that. So, I think too, you know, we can, if we push it back, this also allows AgCom and Conservation to present kind of what their goals and priorities are. Maybe let the public know this is what we're looking to do, this is what these funds could be used for. That might be helpful too and it just might create a better feeling going into it.
Who originated, can I ask, who originated these two items?
I did. Because the Conservation one is in the Town's financial policies and I assumed it had a, well, not assumed, I noticed that it has a similar purpose and charge set up as the AgCom one, so I put it up because it sounded similar.
It was certainly our long-term goal. Yeah, so I guess at this point, based on the amount of conversation on these two, I would take a motion to reconsider them for the spring. Is that fair?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, could you, I just coughed, couldn't.
Take a motion to reconsider these for the spring so that we sort of placehold with these for the next time?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
And that's for both?
Yes.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, again, unless anybody has questions, we're going to move through to the ones we've placed. So, we've placed Housing Trust, which I think we have a massive document from Dave giving us more background. I know there are questions.
Yeah, through the chair, I was hoping we could have a, because the conversations we've had with the other boards and the placement meeting we had last week, I felt was very fruitful and productive. We had some great topics of conversation. I would like to revisit this for conversation.
So, this is just the Housing Trust one?
The Housing Trust one. I know that we have a memo that's been provided.
Yep.
And I guess.
The memo's new when you're, under your binder, Jeff.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I got it. Is there only one?
Yep.
So, what item is this?
This is top of Page 3.
What's the gist of this, Mike?
No, it's not. It's the bottom of, yeah, it's the top of Page 3.
Top of Page 3. So, it's item?
Haven't reviewed. What's the gist of the memo?
So, basically, this, creating a housing trust would essentially allow the town to move forward with creating a housing production plan, which is something that is defined by the Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, who we work with quite a bit. So, I spent a little bit of time, because I was a little bit confused about this and And basically, housing production plan lets the town proactively go into planning for the creation of affordable low-income housing units, right? These plans have been widely adopted in eastern Massachusetts. Most of, actually, I printed out a map for the Board and anybody in the public that wants to take a look, straight from DHCD, just if you want to pass these down, just to get an idea. So, there are currently almost no communities in our region that have approved or current housing production plans. Only 10 throughout the state are certified. Now, when DHCD certifies your housing production plan, what it means is that for 40B projects, if developer tries to come into town and says, "We want to place a 40B project," as you know, the state can sometimes overrule local authority to do that. And if your plan is certified, it gives you a little bit more power to control where that project's going to be placed or if at all. However, to get our housing production plan certified, we as a community have to build out one-half of a percent to 1% of affordable low-income housing units on an annual basis until we hit our 10% threshold that the state delineates. That 1% is based on an entire housing stock, which is about 2,900 parcels. So, in order for us to be certified and reap the benefits of having a housing production plan, as a municipality, we're going to have to produce between 15 and 30 affordable housing units per year on our own. And so, I think the possibility of us getting this certified is realistically, I don't want to say slim to none, but there just doesn't seem to be a pressing need in this part of the state for this action. So, I called DHCD and wrote to them about what we should do, community is our size, and they made some suggestions. And this was not one of the suggestions that was made. So, I wanted to throw that out there because going this route, if we decide to adopt this, could trigger some actions that we have to take as a community that would have financial and long-term planning impacts. So, I just wanted to have that discussion so that we know what we're getting into.
So, I guess the first thing is, the language of the article focuses very specifically on accepting the provisions of MGL 44, Section 55(c). It would allow the town the option of creating the housing trust. I think that was Dave's ultimate goal, correct? Which was to accept the MGL and then keep our options open. And I guess the Planning Board met on this last week and I know you're having public hearings.
Not this one. This isn't a zoning one.
Oh, that's right. This isn't a zoning one. But the Planning Board met and talked about this. What was your ultimate, or what was the Planning Board, could you report on the Planning Board's ultimate thoughts?
No.
No.
Maybe tomorrow night's also we bring that up.
So, I think too, what we need, I think the feedback that DHCD provided is that affordable housing is based on area median income, right? Which is calculated by county. So, we're in the Worcester County area and they're just, based on what is considered low income of 80% of area median income, which is the threshold, there just isn't a need financially, the numbers don't work for projects in this part of the state, which is why, based on the map that I provided you, there aren't that many housing production plans that are currently being used. It's just not necessarily the best route for us to go as a community. And again, I'm indifferent, if this is something the community wants, that's great. However, it just doesn't seem to be best practice and the right fit for Rutland. What you also have too, to keep in mind, if our plan, if we produce a housing production plan, it's certified and we commit to producing 30 units of affordable low-income housing annually, we could get into a situation where because of the growth bylaw that the town voted in with 36 permits, 45% of our annual housing production, any given year for a period of six, seven years, is going to be low-income affordable, which creates a revenue deficit. So, that's, I guess that's the only, the only point that I wanted to make about this tool. I've seen it in other communities. Having worked for Worcester Housing, it's kind of something that I was a little familiar with, but I wanted to do some more digging on it. But I just want to bring that up to the group.
This is Dave's mission, George, so I wish we had him here.
Yeah, Dave wasn't able to make it. That's why he wrote the memo and provided some backup behind it. He viewed the housing trust as just the town's best option should we go for the housing production plan. He was planning on applying for the Community Compact Best Practice Program for that. We haven't submitted that application yet because we're still in an ongoing best practice cycle, so we wouldn't be able to apply for that for some time anyway. He also provided a map of communities in this Commonwealth that have a, that have a housing trust. Those are the ones, if you turn to the page of this, it has those.
It almost exactly, it almost exactly mirrors the map of the housing production plan. So, I think the best course of action though, if I can, is if we push this till May and have a further conversation about it where Dave is available, but also because it's going to have planning and financial ramifications, maybe we involve and have a group meeting with some of the other boards to kind of flesh this out so that we get it right. And again, you know, it may come out to, this is a great idea or it may be a terrible idea, but I think that we need a little bit further of a conversation to be able to place it, would be my opinion.
Dave just kind of put it forward as a, should this happen, this is the best route in his opinion to do it. A housing trust can own land and can get land transferred to it from when the town gets it in tax title. So, he assumed.
Which we have quite a few parcels kind of on our watch right now.
Yeah. So, that's why he's like, oh, if this stuff is happening, maybe this is our best way to be proactive, to get ready for when that happens. That's why he submitted it there.
What's your feeling on it, Mike? I'm doing it now with the special instead of the annual?
I think it can go either way. I think the annual's not far off and gives us more time to talk about it. Do I think it'll harm the town just setting up the trust? No, because we haven't done the production plan part of it.
The good thing about the production plan is if we do decide to go that route, a lot of the work that we need to do is already completed as part of our housing study that CMRC just went through. So, I think that there's no harm in having further conversations about it and then if we want to pull the trigger, it's something, you know, we can do and we can really support.
I think relative to the question of doing no harm in accepting the provisions of the MGL alone, which doesn't by itself allow Rutland to create the housing trust or an HPP, there'd still be a lot of work to do. Would we, even in just accepting the MGL, be opening ourselves up to something that we're not ready for or possibly not headed towards?
My, that's why, what I was going to finish saying there was, I think, no, it's okay. Pushing it off to the annual meeting, to me, is probably the better of the two options. Like I said, it wouldn't hurt the town, but even talking to Town Council when they were reviewing the warrant, they said most communities do this as a bylaw, not as an acceptance of the MGL. So, that has, would allow the town time to draft.
Do it right.
The way everyone else is going, have time for Bylaw Committee to look at it.
Something as big, I mean, I feel more comfortable with the town planner in front of us talking about why he drafted that.
The Planning Board's just started discussing this, correct?
Okay. So, we placed this. Any of us can rescind that? I mean, Mike, if you've got the actual, it doesn't matter, we voted it, but if you had the actual whoever made the motions, ideally the person that made the original motion.
Ironically, I made the motion.
Yeah, you did.
Okay. Okay, so ideally, you would make a motion to remove it.
Okay. Can I make a motion to remove the housing, housing-related item from the warrant?
And revisit in the spring?
Yep, and with the intent of revisiting in the spring.
Great. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, that one's out. We then have the zoning frontage. There was a jump there and there was the speed limit, which the other night, you know, the chief gave us some background information on that. We then have zoning, which one of those? Lot regularity. And then the final one was the ZBA. So, those are all the Planning Board plus that speed limit one. So, again, we placed actually the first two and now not yet placed by the Select Board, we have the frontage.
And I think we got some clarification that it simply adds the word contiguous.
Yeah.
Or contiguous to the definition of frontage, so.
Yep.
Let me ask you a quick question, Dick. This would eliminate having 100 feet of frontage on X Street and 150 frontage on Y Street, which we've seen numerous times. It would eliminate that.
That is correct.
It was funny because when I went to accept the big check for green communities, and this was wildly unrelated, but it just happened to be in Shrewsbury. Shrewsbury had just passed lot regularity and they were talking about the mathematics behind it.
It's too late for Shrewsbury.
It was, that's funny.
Have you driven through?
I have and it's funny you say that, that they still felt that they needed to shut that door was sort of interesting, but yeah, I don't, I don't know. I assume a lot of us probably look at that and say, oh, jeez. But talking about the math of that and the way that they worked that out was kind of fascinating.
And it's not, it's not a corner lot that has this street, this street here.
No.
It's this one here and then way up in here is another little bit of piece of frontage and it's about time we get away with that.
Correct.
So, through the chair. I think Item M, N, and O, those three zonings, I think they were adequately explained the other night?
Yes, because we also had the Chair of the Planning Board speak to them.
Right.
He sounded fairly comfortable.
With the Planning Board's support of these, right? So, I think we should move forward with placing the M, N, and O.
The Planning Board has discussed these or they are discussing them?
Tomorrow night, we will make a recommendation, the Board will run a recommendation to give at the Town Meeting, the Special Town Meeting.
And then you've scheduled a public hearing on these?
That's tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
That is the hearing.
It is the hearing. It's everything.
Good times. Okay. Okay.
If we're good?
Yeah, thank you. Go ahead.
So, I'll make the motion that we place our Item M for the zoning bylaw. I don't know what it's called here.
The frontage?
This is the frontage one.
The frontage bylaw, Item N about the irregular, irregularity and illusionary frontage wording and Item O to bring into alignment with the Mass General Law for the Zoning Vote of Appeals Power, related articles as written. All three, M and O.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We had placed nicks, correct?
Yep.
All right. No, we didn't?
Yes, we did.
Yeah. Are we sure? Are we 100% sure?
It's on my place list.
Oh, good. All right, we had questions on earthworks that I think have been addressed pretty comprehensively with a wording change. We had held off on placing that.
KP Law requests?
Yeah, to change it so it said promulgate regulations with approval of the Select Board. That way, there's an elected check on it.
What letter is that?
Item P. So, I'll make a motion that we place, that the Board place Item P relating to the earthworks bylaw amendment with the contingency that it has included the sentence with the approval of Select Board for recommendation of KP Law.
Or similar language.
Similar language. So, as written with the inclusion of the recommendation of KP Law.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on. I am on Page, on Page 4. So, the following we've placed, we've got municipal departments revisiting the current budget, Safer Grant, highway construction, that one was for the driveway, the 8,200 temporary employee, the 6,100 boiler, was that the boiler? No, the heating system.
The heating system, yeah.
The 2,500 supplies.
After some further review, I think we'll be able to absorb that in the other accounts that we have, so we can take that one off.
That would be great. We might even get under 40.
Yeah.
Warrant articles. That would be great.
Yeah, that should be fine removing that one.
Because we did table those other 3750s at 7,000.
Yeah, but I was looking at the accounts that the bills should have been paid out of, like was suggested the other night, we can cover it there.
Anybody remember who initially made that motion? We did approve this.
Was it V we're talking about?
Yep.
Department of Public Works and Board, fuel adjustment.
I believe it was a unanimous vote, so I'm not, it doesn't make too much of a difference, but we get the motion to remove it.
Motion to remove Item V from the warrant as presented.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, then we placed the $2,000, that was Secretary of Wages, 1920, that was the Police Chief Correction for COLA. And now we're going down, I'm in the middle of Page 5. We had questions regarding the 13-3 for the OCAM situation.
Yeah, so, this is the reason why legal's still reviewing the warrant. The, what will be done in the end is a, the money that OCAM pays us monthly. Will be going towards Seth's salary line item. So Lauren, or Attorney Goldberg, I should say, is just clarifying to the T, that way we don't have any issues with it later on. The intent, she said, is all, is, will be there, it's just how she words it, but what it will say is that the monthly. IMA fee will be put towards the fire chief's salary line item. The way this wording would go, it would be increasing that salary line item there, but the issue is what if we only go till March and this goes to the end of the year? So she's getting language in there to put that in on a monthly basis.
Okay.
So we don't have a lot of language to go on with this, to place it.
Mm-hmm.
Let's add that sentence in there.
Well, can we?
How do we place it?
Can we place it on the, on the contingency that? That it encompasses whatever legal provides us for language?
Yeah. And we're keeping the sum at that cap?
Yes.
Is that your motion?
Uh, my motion is to place item Y with the contingency that it, it conforms with what legal provides us back in terms of language and it is capped at the original amount delineated.
I have a second, great discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we didn't place this, we didn't know, this was one thing that Mike threw in at the end, I, obviously FinCom had had some questions about it because they hadn't seen it yet, it was brand new from, I think, that day.
Yeah, plus we, that's, it's, it's pennies, so that one can go, we just didn't know what it would be.
Right.
And then the repair ended up being a lot easier than we thought.
Where's it coming from?
The DPW's operating budget, cause it was just one pipe.
A thousand is hopefully absorbable within a repair budget, but.
Came in at six hundred fifty dollars.
Okay.
So we're gonna leave that off?
We're gonna leave it off and that will not require a motion, there was no action on that. Uh, all right, on the bottom, we obviously had some big ticket items that there was a lot of discussion on, and the first one that we did place, uh, was the F-two-fifty for the DPW superintendent.
I'd like to talk about that one if we could.
Okay.
I've been thinking about this one, uh. Since our meeting the other night, and we do recognize that didn't go through CIPC and I think we need to make some efforts and, uh, some checkpoints along the way to make sure that these big items do go through, uh, CIPC. However, uh, this weekend I did have opportunity to bump into the mechanic of the specific vehicle that we are giving our superintendent right now. And he told me that at present condition, it is not safe, it's over two hundred thousand miles. And they, he had it up on the lift and he's telling me that the vehicle that our superintendent is given to make him through the winter, if we were to kick this down the road, uh, is not safe. So we've been put on notice of that and, uh, although I am absolutely conscious of the need to go through the CIPC, I think this is, should be one of the exceptions because it's. Uh, I think it is an emergency, emergency repair that's needed, I would like to maybe dial in CIPC as, as quickly and as best as possible on this, but I would like to leave it in there. Let the, uh, people decide, because I, I don't think the vehicle that he have, first of all, I don't think the vehicle that he has is, is fit for a DPW superintendent, it's like a crossover vehicle. And. You know, it, it, I, I think if we kick the can down the road until May, it would, it would be approved anyways, because you need to have vehicles for the DPW, it's a DPW vehicle. I would like to leave it on with apologies to CIPC. And some sort of plan and action to, uh, to work better with that when the capital expenses. That's how I feel.
Yeah, I, I agree with everything Select and Stillings said, uh, in terms of the need, I think there's no question there. However, I think. We have a process to ensure that we have a checks and balance of some of these large capital expenses. Because realistically, there's so much stuff that comes in front of this board. We don't always have the time to vet these purchases. I know that we've had a lot of turnover, which I think the chair mentioned at a joint meeting, uh, of folks that are running departments. But I think it's important to recognize that the CIPC process is state recommended for these things and I really, I'm hesitant to recommend anything. That doesn't go through the processes and procedures so that we can weigh what the needs of the town are versus the expenses. I know that there was that item, the LED sign, I think the walkway was maybe the only other one, but we chalked that up to an emergency because of the oncoming winter. I just, uh, I understand it was, it was not a purposeful oversight. But it's just something that I feel like if we want to be consistent and set a good precedent, that maybe we can, we can push back until the spring. That's my only thought.
I, I agree, uh, generally. Were it not for conversation with the mechanic who's telling me that it is unfit, that it's unsafe, and I'm willing to, uh, the sign, I mean, there's no bigger proponent of the electric billboard than myself. I'm willing to kick that down because it didn't go through the right process, as, as much as I would like to see that enacted, so. Uh, there are other items on here that we will be pushing back because it didn't go through the CIPC process, but I do ask. That, uh, an exception be made because I think it's, it meets the emergency, uh, criteria. We can't put the, we can't put the DPW director in a, in a vehicle that really should be junked, it's got over two hundred thousand miles, I don't even think it's auctionable.
Hold on one sec, Joe.
I, I agree with you, Jeff, but I just want to add that this isn't the first time we've had to apologize to CIPC.
The first time I have had to.
It's not the first time this board.
So we're gonna do it, right?
I'll take turns, yeah.
I just want them, I just want to acknowledge that fact, that this isn't the first time, so.
So do you mind if I chime in and then you can go? I think my concern with this, in hearing the timeline and hearing Joe Buckley talk, is that it was floating out there as a request for CIPC to review in the appropriate timeline. And because of the turnover, Joe Buckley not understanding our process fully, made kind of a command decision to say, I, I can see what we need in the immediate future. It was in retrospect, well within his rights to, to have, you know, looked at a list that might have been forty items long and just left it and let CIPC make some decisions. But what he did instead was pull things out. And in retrospect, for him to know that now he would have had to have waited that long to have other items get reviewed, not knowing that timeline of how we progress relative to. Spring, you know, and annual town meeting and the money that's available then versus free cash getting certified and where we sit on a typical November night. I, I don't know that we gave him the tools, so to the point, Wayne, of, you know, yeah, apologizing, maybe it's not just to the CIPC. We, he, we threw him in, just like, you know, with Mike, he came into a couple of really big ticket items, he wasn't thinking about his own truck, I give him a lot of credit for that, for not thinking about his own truck. Um, that, but. You know, is there enough blame to go around here relative to us not seeing him through that process and, and making a command decision and having Bob Reed step up, who again, was also just filling in. To say, no, 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 leave it there, the CIPC policies are such that it was, it's an appropriate thing to, to leave on the list and see where they let it lie, as opposed to pulling it back completely. And then I'm sitting here thinking about winter ops. And what we're going to ask him to do, and many concerns that came up when. We were replacing Gary was this change from somebody that you felt like was kind of boots on the ground, right, versus the engineer that we know we needed for many other things. If we can't give him the tools to take a route if he needs it, um, whether it's in his truck or even in a bigger truck, you know, when he gets that licensing, I, I don't, I don't know that we're giving him the tools to succeed, that's my concern with this one. And I, I totally see what you're saying, Mitch, and I agree, I agree, it's not, not the first time we've been imperfect on this, and I, I think Joe's ready to, to speak up on that, so there you go.
I just had, you know, a comment that last week when we discussed this, um, you know, one thing that was stated during the course of the meeting, whether it was specific to this or not, I don't know. But the CIPC does have a provision for emergencies. So along those lines, the question I would have is in that discussion, Jeff, when, um, you talked about it, what were the emergency nature of the issues?
Yeah, as was requested of, uh, my office today, I did get some pictures of the vehicle.
There's holes in the frame.
People want to see them.
Well, take a look.
Okay.
Show the pictures.
Pass those around. Yeah, we received that request today to get those ready for this.
I see the problem, it's a Ford.
Oh, here we go again.
My high school beater car was in better shape than. No, seriously, take a look.
Yeah, I, um.
This is.
Keep it up, I'll take back my apology.
For the two hundred thousand, you get your money's worth.
We need to prove your apology anyway, so.
Oh, yeah, he didn't accept it.
I did try to get the inspector's report, um, I wasn't able to, but I did talk to the inspector who did say it's likely not to pass next year, but it does have a current sticker on it.
I don't think you can get a sticker nowadays with rust, with the surface rust like that.
You can get rust, but it can't have a hole.
Well, now look at the frame, there's a hole in the frame.
What you have to do is you put tape over it and you can pass. Oh, really?
Yeah.
Tape then bond.
Yeah.
It's in a pretty rough shape, I mean, there's no doubt about it.
So again, you know, just to kind of close on it, we, there's a provision for emergency, if it's deemed that there's an emergency nature. You know, one of the benefits of going through the process is we can have a conversation with the department head about what's the best option. Is it necessarily this truck or is it another truck, and, you know, we forego the benefit of some of that if it's, if it's kind of a rush scenario, but. Obviously, no one's looking to put any department head at risk if, if there's an emergency nature to it.
Can we share these with CIPC, hope to get a. An hard blessing?
Well, Joe's not gonna.
Yeah, I, I can't alone, but.
I don't typically. Go for putting something onto a warrant and then saying, well, you can take no action if something doesn't work out, because the fact of the matter is at the whim of the body, you don't. You know, you can say, well, I make a motion to take no action, we're not ready, and they might agree with that and they might say, no, I, I want to vote on this, I want to take action. In this case, uh, is this the one where we place it, where we have good faith, we have reasons for placing it, we ask CIPC for an emergency review. Um, and if that night comes and, and we've got a lot of things that have changed, particularly for a purchase like this, my guess is that if the board makes a motion for no action, the body would, would agree with it and would move on.
Can I, uh, ask a question in that? With, again, I'm gonna harp on the farmer's almanac, which Joe laughed at me for the other night, uh, saying that this is gonna be a really bad winter, because I. I do read the farmer's almanac and I'm glad to see that Dick agrees with my assessment, but the, uh. The, um. When, if we were to move forward with the truck, when would Mr. Buckley have it, have it here so that he can use it for plowing? It will be used this winter or is it something where we're gonna order it and then it's gonna be delivered in the springtime?
Good question.
My understanding of it is we have it by mid-December if it passed.
I mean, this is a stock truck, right, well, this is not a special order.
Yeah.
It does have a, uh, a bells and whistles package on it, which I would lobby to remove, but that's.
It's got a comparable package as the Red Fire.
It's less than the Red Fire.
Less.
Yeah, it doesn't have the leather seats.
He's got leather seats? No, he said he didn't.
The fire truck, not this one. The fires pick up, has them, not this one.
We're moving on, leather cleans up blood really well compared.
Well, vinyl is the base option and I would argue that's a better, uh, alternative, but.
So will CIPC still talk to us if we left this one in there?
They barely, barely talk to us now.
It's already been placed, so.
It has been placed, but we're reviewing other things.
All right.
We're running out of apologies right there.
Well, we'll make up for it in the next couple, we're gonna take down the billboard, right?
Uh, well, so we placed the, I think feasibility design on the senior center with, um, with opportunity for community space. Seemed like everybody still felt comfortable, there were others that they were.
Yeah, I get that feeling as well.
Yeah. And Nancy's just done so much work on this too, so, uh, the LED sign, who wants to make the motion? Ready? We don't even need to talk, anyone?
Make a motion to remove, uh, item AC, the thirty thousand dollars for the LED sign, because it did not go through the, uh, CIPC process, so for.
With the intent of revisiting in the spring.
Revisit for the annual town meeting.
I'll second that.
And we, I think you can, you can assume that you will see this on the list. You can assume you will see, wait till you see your list, Joe. What's our, what's our deadline, November first?
It's right here, I'll submit it right now.
All right, all in favor? All right, so that is removable with intent to revisit. Computers, I think everybody felt comfortable in the understanding of what we needed to do for that, so we don't get, so we don't get taken in by people from god knows what country, yeah.
Leave it.
Town charter. We actually did not get any.
Feedback.
Noticeable feedback against it, felt like that was.
Is that a capital expense? Hey, Joe, is the town charter twenty thousand dollars a capital expense, twenty thousand dollars for?
For a consultant.
It's the hiring of the consultant, so it's, yeah. I know. It's, yeah, it's not the project itself, it's the hiring of the consultant, it's a little gray.
I think it's interesting because we have, speaking as a member from CIPC for a moment, we have looked at, um, studies and work related to those as capital investments. If the expectancy of the use of the study was beyond the five-year period. So it just depends on how we view. This item.
Yeah, I don't know if it's classified as capital, cause the, the, the outcome of the study isn't really a capital item. You know, it's, it's a non-tangible.
Well, it's not a study, it's a hiring of a consultant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, right, but that's, it's still gonna result in a non-tangible at the end of the day, right?
Yeah.
At the beginning of the day too.
Yep, pretty much.
Nothing. I'm happy to push it back and be, do it the right way.
I mean, do we need a consultant to help with the town charter?
I would say yes.
And this is what, the Collins Center?
Yeah.
To draft it, yeah.
I mean, is that giving us a discount or can we bid that out? Like, why are we going with the Collins Center?
I went with them, one, cause they're on the state contract and, two, they've drafted a fair amount of town char, town and city charters throughout the Commonwealth, uh, the closest being Hubbardston. A couple of years ago. The, um. They know their work and they know how the process works, um, for the. Three different avenues in which a town charter could be drafted, so I figured if someone's going to have the background knowledge to guide us through that extensive process, because it's gonna be a minimum two and a half years before we have any. Thing to go off of with them through a charter commission or a charter board, because again, different processes. That, I figured we should have someone who knows what they're doing.
Is there any benefit to holding off on this and getting it approved either later or differently in bidding it out to see what? What the outputs of other firms would be, just so we know kind of what we can expect in return? I'm just not. I just would like to see a. A product that the Collins Center put together to ensure that we're getting something that, that we're paying for.
Well, if it helps, we can absolutely approve this and still go the route of, of doing a little bit of calling around, because this does say a consultant, it doesn't say Collins Center.
Correct, and this, that would be a bid for services which requires an appropriation before we go out to bid.
Right. So then if we could still decide to bid it out later on.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we just hit nine thousand, right, on the population, so this was something that was supposed to be.
Wait, do we know that we hit nine thousand?
I was just reading it, I think I was reading it in the landmarks, know your town.
How do we know that? Where did that come from?
Yeah, I haven't heard that yet.
Because the census hasn't been done yet.
It's in the landmark, it's gonna be.
Well, there's lots of things in the landmark that, uh.
Why is everybody laughing at that?
Just kidding, Patty.
Well, I'm just, I'm just curious because the, the, I mean, as of this, we don't have any census numbers yet, so we have no idea realistically what the confirmed number.
First time I seen it, it was always eighty-nine-hundred and then the landmark came out, it was nine, nine thousand thirty-eight.
Oh, see, I was gonna suggest maybe they just rounded up, but if it was nine thousand thirty-eight, that's not the case.
Yeah, so anyways, nonetheless, I mean, I guess my question is, are we at or past the point where we needed to be?
I would've started looking at this when we hit six thousand.
Right, so.
And that's a good point too, because I know that Wayne had brought this up several times and at some point, we're gonna have to have a conversation about what we do, when we hit ten thousand. We trigger all sorts of different state requirements that we're not in compliance with.
It's a huge milestone.
Are we planning it properly?
Absolutely.
To catch all that.
Be interesting to see if that would be part of the master plan with a. Primary goal with some deadlines to it, Joe.
What do you?
What's the typical order of events with a charter, I mean, is it seating a, a charter commission, is it collecting sign, signatures, and just?
Well, this person's gonna tell us all about it.
Can I?
Please.
Just, because I did a, uh, went through a charter drafting process when I, uh, worked in Gardner, uh, so there's two different routes you can take. For a charter commission, you need to seat a charter commission, that's a group of citizens that then drafts the document. There are two options for that, uh, you can, A, have it appointed charter commission. That one by statute does not have a specific timeline with it, that just meets to say, this is what we'd like to see in the charter, this is how we'd like to see our government set up, these are the policies we'd like to. That just meets to say, this is what we'd like to see in the charter, this is how we'd like to see our government set up, these are the policies we'd like to have in our charter. Or there's an elected version of a charter commission, that one has a statutory timeline of two and a half years of needing this done, and then having an immediate vote after that two and a half year period is up. The difference with the appointed one is you could still be working on a charter five years from now, or even if you hit something in two and a half years, a vote doesn't need to happen until the town is ready for it, versus elected, you have it right off. At that point, um, the charter would go to town meeting, get approved there as a home rule petition, so it'd have to be approved at town meeting, approved at the ballot, approved by the House, approved by the Senate, signed by the governor, and then it becomes the town charter. So no matter what, in the end, it has to go to town meeting, um, election, House, Senate, governor, so that part's separate, it's all just how you set up the charter commission beforehand.
I was just curious if that, if that should be, if that commission should be seated before the consultants party, because really, the consultant's gonna be consulting the commission, right?
Yeah, I would, if I can, I would say, yes, definitely seat the commission first. But I would say, go for the money now, so we can bid it out, to see what price we get, while we're working through the process of figuring out how we'd like to see that seat filled, especially where articles can just stay encumbered.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, I'd wanna hear from the consultant what our options are for seating, what's a, a great working number? Who do you typically look at relative to professionals versus, uh, you know, residents at large, yeah, I think I'd wanna hear from them on that part, I don't know.
And that's an option too.
Okay. So, comfortable leaving it with the language as it is?
Sure.
Iron and consultant, so we're gonna leave, okay, so no action there. Here's our number two, big apology, right, walkway at community center, we're considering an emergency. Um, it felt.
I think it's gonna have to be.
It felt like the room was pretty.
I mean, it's, it's bad over there, I know that they patched it.
Yeah, but it still needs work.
It's bad.
Like you said, you couldn't get a baby stroller through there.
No, I mean, that's part of, the, part of the issue there was my competency with the baby stroller, but, um, it's, it's tough, if, if you have, and we have, you know, kids using it too, if you have a, a kid that, that has accessibility requirements, I mean, it's just, it's embarrassing to have the building in that kind of shape.
You know, I, calling it emergent is a little sketchy on our part, because let's face it, it hasn't changed significantly in years, and we've all been talking about how bad it is. But the fact that we've now finally recognized it as an emergency, I suppose.
And all it takes is one fall, I mean, if you have one fall, that's, that's a liability claim.
I would also say this is the first year where we've had to block off the railing side of it with cones, because that's where it started to race, so now that railing is no longer accessible to people who enter the building.
All right, all right.
And I think the opinion, the opinion of the, of the group last week was that
Yeah, I think.
it is enough of an emergen-emergency compliance to justify it.
So no further action from us, um, fifteen.
Oh, sorry, just as a question, um, will this be bid out as well? Okay, because the, the number seems high.
The number came from, um, Weston Sampson Engineering as a, this is what we think it'll cost you, but we bid it out, we do the work that way.
Okay, great.
That weird number, they must've bid it by square footage, or they must've come up with the number by.
Yeah.
You'd think that.
I, well.
You'd be surprised.
It is in the background, yeah.
We saw, we saw the copy that he submitted.
Yeah, you have the detailed square footage.
Uh, all right, so vision appraisal software, uh, treasure collector monies for legal and land court. Uh, any questions, or anyone want to revisit the two different plotter, printer, scanners? There was some conversation, we kind of went in both ways. By the end of the conversation, hearing, I think, that they were needed in very separate buildings, I think we were getting a little bit different feedback at the end of the conversation than the beginning, but.
And they wanted the wording in the articles of, say.
For the public safety.
Plotter, printer, scanner, comma, for the public safety annex, or, uh, for the DPW. Yeah, I, I just, I think it's chintzy to, to ask people to share a printer.
Well, that's not much share, but we've got Joe down in DPW.
If both departments really need it, then it's.
Yeah.
I mean, computers sometimes cost seven thousand.
Well, and we're still giving the residents the opportunity to say, uh, yes to one and no to another, which.
Also true.
Yeah.
But it also, he also says it gives you the opportunity to start digitizing some of these, uh, big things, I mean, that's why you can't sit in the planning boardroom, you know?
We also just today found a boatload of planning, plan, planning department plans in the attic of the fire station.
Well, you can, you can put that on a thumb drive, you know, if you had the right person at the time.
I'm just gonna throw that out there, obviously, we had a lot of warrant articles, this is gonna be a long meeting, is there any comfort level, having now had multiple discussions about this, to combine these into one article for two, or no, you wanna leave it?
I like the two, just because it lets people know where they're going.
Okay, that's fine.
They agree with that.
And I'll include that extra language, just say, for the DPW building for the annex.
That's right.
Uh, stump grinder, the tree project, the demolition, I think we were all okay, I know we had a couple of questions about the pool pump house roof.
Trees, I think we had some talk about, I mean, it's necessary, needed, this was kind of a, a wish list for, for director, a little bit.
It was, I.
Just had the tree process, the tree farms.
Well, I think he also feels like he's eligible for more grants if he does this.
It's also, you'd be surprised how often this comes up in other communities with, whether it's trees, their placement in parks, or the trees that are outliving their park usefulness, or in Worcester with the Longhorn beetle issue, I just, I usually wouldn't be in favor of something like this, because it is kind of a, I don't know, it's an interesting item, but we've seen in this area, it's become kind of a need, I guess.
I think it's a perfect one for the people to decide.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then the next one to demolition.
The demolition, yeah. Then we had the tables and chairs, I don't think there's any discussion on that. All right, now, five point two, I'm on page eight, the top. The feasibility design renovations of community hall, we obviously got enormous amount of feedback on that. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Uh, before we go, can we just, um, the pool house, the pump roof?
Oh, you wanna go back to it?
I know that we got some feedback from FinCom on that.
Yes.
What was it?
The pool, pump house roof.
I wanna at least.
Oh, I'm sorry, I.
Oh, sorry, you weren't there. It was, I think, um, the feedback that we received, and it can go both ways, but it was that, uh, the pool and rec charges private fees for their programming, and so, the general public would be paying for a roof when they don't see the benefit of the programming. That's the, the crux of the issue.
Right.
Yeah.
And there's a point there.
I don't see it. I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick on this one, I, I, I would argue in the other direction, which is, we have allowed a revolving fund in town that wasn't always revolving, to pay for capital projects on a property that the town owns. You would never find that, if we went out tomorrow and hired a private firm to manage our pool for next season, they're not gonna come forward and say, hey, by the way, you need this, and we'll pay for it out of our intake, and the fact is, the pool does, is not a money maker, they actually subsidize the pool with other. Yeah, they subsidize the pool with other operating expenses from programming.
And I mentioned this the other night, we had this conversation, and I develop youth programming for a living, and I have a kind of a soft spot for youth programming, but um, the reality is too, is that I know that for some of these summer programs, waivers are granted for families that can't necessarily afford to pay for them. Every dollar rec has to spend on something else is something that, you know, a waiver or a scholarship could be rescinded. So, the town owns the infrastructure, um, I think we can make the case both ways, but I, I'd like to leave it on.
Yeah, we already voted to put it on there, so.
I just wanted to discuss, because I know FinCom might come back.
Yeah, yeah. And I get it, we've been spending a lot of years with not an option to pay for things like this, and they were a lot bigger than twenty-five hundred dollars, and, and thank God, we had rec revolving there, um, that was able to absorb it. Uh, okay, yeah, I'm back to page eight, five point two. Could I have a motion?
Is it AP?
Well, AP, I think, I think we agreed that that would get pulled.
Well, we hadn't placed it, so, yeah.
In light of the, uh, the other feasibility.
Yep.
Yeah, and we also, we had a conversation with the other boards, because I thought the other meeting, uh, the other night was really productive. But the, the gist of it being, if this is something we wanna see, we should meet collectively as a group of boards and maybe solicit public input, and then maybe set a couple of public hearings, get some feedback, and then we could move forward in the spring if this is something we, we felt strongly about.
And at the very least, check the box with CIPC, which wasn't done on this one, right? Fifty-eight thousand for the, uh, so, just for that reason alone.
Did the community center get placed?
It did.
Yeah, the community.
Community hall, center.
The senior.
Senior center, yeah.
Yeah. That haven't gone through CIPC either.
You know what's interesting, Joe, and, whatever, hindsight twenty-twenty, it might just be something for us to revisit, I pulled the old FY seventeen to twenty-two overview and analysis, and we've all been talking about this senior center for as long as you and I have been doing this, and why we have not been including it as, you know, knowing too, that when CIPC was formed, we were coming out of an enormous amount of growth relative to municipal infrastructure and buildings, right, two schools, this building that we're in now, the police and fire poke safety building, it almost seems as if when we started doing this and talking about some of the CIPC-related large projects, they felt very far away, and now finally, they're not, and we're sitting here looking back at, I, I, at least I was, at some of our lists, and I'm going, you know what, look, that's twenty-seventeen to twenty-twenty-two, with the exception of actually, community hall remodel update, which is on there, um, one point eight million dollars, we didn't, I, I don't know what we were, yeah.
Yeah, actually, over the, over the course of the last few fiscal years, excluding last year, but prior to that, there've been multiple building-related requests, and they range from the community hall, to the community center, to dispatch, to renovations at fire, um, public safety, I think those are the, the main four that have come our direction, and they are, there was one year, I believe, they all came in a single fiscal year, so obviously, there wasn't the ability to make a determination of priority based on the very high-level information that was submitted to the committee, just that we feel we need something and, you know, yeah, we can't disagree, but who needs it more, knowing we can't do them all at once? So that was the year, I think it was the FY seventeen or FY eighteen report that we made a, a recommendation to form a building needs committee to determine, okay, we have these needs, what's the project that needs, we need the most? Is it the senior center, is it the community hall, and then prioritize in that way, and move forward with expending money on that project that is deemed to be the one with the highest priority or the highest need. So, you know, yeah, these projects have come to the CIPC, but never with the level of detail to make an intelligent, informed recommendation.
I will say with that too, um, because I had talked to the architect after the last board meeting, before last Thursday, and hadn't heard back, I did get those prices that the board asked me to look at, and for a project that's as big as they're saying, um, for actual construction on that building to be done at one point nine million, or a new building being constructed at eight point six.
Talking about community hall?
Yeah, community hall, yeah, at eight point six million, that's something I think should be vetted more and have more community input, I couldn't agree more, so.
All right.
At least we've got a start.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna kick this one down the road a little bit?
Yeah.
Make sure we do it right?
And can I get a motion?
We did, we did not place.
We didn't, but there's been so much discussion on it, um, and then is this something that we want to completely remove? Or put off for the spring, or we might not be ready for the spring?
I think, look.
Put off the spring, see if we're ready.
Well.
Yeah, that's the thing, I think let's just, um, motion to reconsider this in the spring after doing due diligence, and we'll make a determination then.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All over? I don't remember why.
I want to ask about that one, sorry, for the building use committee, I know that that committee's kind of in, been named, but have they been sworn in, or they?
They recently have all just been sworn in, so we can start bidding.
Okay. Thank you. And can there be a note that they should coordinate with CIP, is, they're a member of CIPC on that committee? I can't remember.
I don't remember.
No, they didn't, Harry was pretty clear that he didn't want.
Yeah, we thought it should be there, a, a line, a distinction there.
That's fine, but can there just be a note that?
Coordinate with them, absolutely.
Right, as determinations are made. Thank you.
I apologize, I don't remember why we didn't place the study, were we looking for?
We made a dollar amount last week, we got it on Thursday.
That's what it was. How do people feel about the fourteen-nine on the traffic and design study for sixty-eight, Washington Street?
I mean, it includes the lighting and the results?
Yeah.
Not just the study?
Uh, no, it's, it's a study.
It's just a study to meet the DOT requirements.
Yeah.
So.
Yep.
I hate studies and non-tangible.
I mean, this, should this have gone through CIPC as well?
Is it gonna result in a capital purchase of some sort?
Yes.
Well, signage.
Oh, that meets the threshold.
It depends what signage we choose. I'm really torn on this one, I, with the, that last accident that we had, you know, Mr. Sherman keeps coming in, it really, really shook him a lot. How many things can you call emergent? I don't, I don't know.
Let the people vote.
Doing a good job.
Just let the people decide, Mr. Sherman, the whole thing, state his case again.
I guess this is semantics, but Joe or Mitch, for, if I may, for CIPC, do studies normally go through CIPC if the intent, if the study dollars amount is over, or if the intent is probably the work coming out, the recommendations coming out of that study are going to go over?
It's, it's gonna, if the study results in a capital expenditure of some kind, that's usually when CIPC likes to vet the study. I think the perfect example was, we had an incident last year, we had some items that were being considered, like, um, there were these, uh, they removed algae from, uh.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the water department.
Like the little solar powered.
Yep, yeah.
And then, uh, Joe came in and said, we're not gonna do that, we need an algae bloom study before we take any action, it's the smart course.
Yeah.
In that way, we were able to make a determination, and I think, you know, personally, and that's why CIPC exists, it saved the town from expending money on something that would have been, you know, frivolous and, and not exactly intelligent, given that we didn't have the information we needed to, to see what we should have bought.
Right.
So, in that instance, I mean, we were looking to, you know, the study, and then the study could result in a purchase of whatever.
Right, but I guess for a s- study such as this, especially given kind of the, the summer that happened there, I mean, it wasn't just that one accident, that was the culmination of them all.
Oh, no, I, I think that there can be a case made that this is needed, and that's certainly the case, it is needed. It's more just like, you know, I think we knew this was coming, and we could have gotten it to CIPC to make sure we went through the vetting process in a timely fashion.
Yeah.
And that's the main argument, I mean, we're beyond that point now, we have to move forward.
Right.
Um, but I think that would be, that would be the mindset, I just don't wanna be in a situation as a board where, you know, I know that there was some animosity between the boards at the, the spring meeting with certain boards not recommending items that were put forth, and uh, we just need to have a better collaborative working relationship.
No, I don't think any of us are arguing that point, it's just kind of the timing of, it seems like a lot of stuff happened the second half of the summer, the end of the summer, and so, the best way to do that, like a heads up to CIPC, to be like.
Well, I think that last accident really brought this to the forefront, it was already being thought of, but that last accident really brought it forward.
I think it should be noted that this, this is coming forward from the DPW director, it's not a wish list item from the board here, you know, so.
And it's so we can do something, I mean, realistically, DOT needs this, so we can make it safer.
Right, so for us to not do it is, is to, you know, to.
Negligent.
Right. It's, it's negligent, but it's also to, to refute the wishes of the director of DPW, so.
Well, and again, it's also from the person who wasn't here for the last deadline of the CIPC project submissions. Right, this is, this is new to him. He is submitting this for the first time, that he's within the, the round of submissions for consideration.
Let's make this our second mulligan to, uh.
Is it our second?
It's like our thirteenth mulligan.
It's, throw it on.
Buy some strings and, yeah. All right, I need a motion.
Motion to place AQ, the, uh, town study, fourteen thousand nine hundred, to undertake a traffic and design study for the intersection of sixty-eight and Washington Street.
Second.
Any more discussion, all in favor? All right, I would entertain, um, a motion to place the next three, which are the large parcel, the deed parcels listings.
I have a quick question for Dick.
I think there were several questions that probably might.
Did you ever find out there was any bond up on any of the sale? There wasn't any?
No.
Or you didn't find out?
No, no, Becky had no bonds, holding on any big word on bonds at all.
Wishful thinking.
Yes.
Do we, um, is, is the, the owner of these parcels?
Deceased.
Well, he's deceased, but I mean, can his estate or whoever's handling this, can he sell these? If he wanted to sell, during the process, I mean, it could be like a short sale situation or anything like that?
The lawyer's already talked to Becky and.
No, I know he's already talked to Becky, but I mean, it's still privately owned technically.
But there were, I believe there were no siblings or anything else, they did an heirs' search, and were unable to find anyone.
Right, but I mean, who current, who currently owns the property right now?
Who's the state?
The state.
So they can't sell it?
Correct, because they don't have a, they have an executor of the estate, but they don't have an owner of the estate.
We'll make a good strike to feel. The attorney can turn it over to the town.
Take it.
Yeah, can I?
Does he have a second? Is he trying to second it?
They already tried to, we objected by the town.
So, what?
I know, but he's- He's the executor, and he can-
Yeah. He, what this is doing is, is, these are twenty-eight parcels that we were planning to go to land court with anyway, because they're in tax title, so Becky's looking to say, that's what the, um, front sheet, if you turn to this part of your binder, is, um, a-
Q, I think?
Q, T, and R, S, and T.
R, S, T.
Um, so this is property that we'll be owning anyway, whether it's next year or in two and a half years. Um, if we go to land court, the total cost is gonna be fifteen thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars, or if we go through this route, the total cost is gonna be two thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars. Um, so Becky's just looking to get the savings for land that we have in tax title.
And it'll be signed over to the town.
Yeah, I mean, for now. But I mean, like, the, the questions we had at the meeting that night was, what, what's the intent of what we wanna do with the property after it's acquired?
We'll just have it. What's the intent of the two acres on Fisherman's Road?
Becky's, Becky's typical intent is to divest.
Wait, all?
To auction it all?
Yeah, is, is, if that helps.
Can we add that provision to?
I did check on that after the, um, questions raised at last meeting, and this is just to, for the town to take the property between the executor of the other state and the town. We can't specifically-
We can't say with the intent?
With the, exactly.
Oh, we have it, then we can have a discussion on what we wanna do with it later. I mean, that's what the-
Do we need some of these parcels in order to, uh, repair those roads?
Probably to make the road out to Crest Rock, be nice, instead of having such a long dead-end road.
Well, I don't know that we wanna start building roads, um, but-
Well, I think these are all, it was only a hundred feet of that.
I just don't wanna be land banking. I mean, there's no reason why the government should own the property and-
Well, that's why I asked the question, do we need these to, to do repairs to those roads? 'Cause they, they definitely need repairs.
It's a secondary question, though. I think the point is, we're gonna own this either the easy way or the hard way. This, as much as it's very worthy for us, is the easy way, the cheaper way.
And who knows, this may be low income housing someday.
No. Well, or it could be a soccer field, it could be hunting land, it could be something.
No, won't.
It could be-
I'm not gonna go saying it's wetland. I'm gonna say that the DCR has already declared it to be unbuildable lots because of the proximity to the streams and the rivers.
When has that stopped anybody in town before?
Town fishing.
Hey, hey, pipe to use this gavel. For you, Peter. Oh, my gosh, no.
I, I think we discussed this-
The night's a servant.
No.
I think we discussed this sufficiently enough amongst the boards the other night that we should place these three, but the people accept it.
I mean, my understanding was we were going to own, the town was going to own the land one way or the other, and so, we can own the land at a savings of twelve thousand four hundred fifty dollars to the town, or we can have it drag out however many years, and then have it cost the town that difference of twelve thousand. And then we have that conversation as to what we do with the land secondary to-
Or I'd go after it or all, just let it go.
Yeah, I would just like to see us recoup some of those lost taxes somehow, if we have to auction some of it. Um, it's just costing the town money if we hold on to it.
I think, Mitch, Becky has a really good track record of this. We've, she's been taking properties pretty consistently, almost since the moment she started and got her feet out, you know, got her feet under her on this, and so, this one is our most unusual one to date, being, uh, an estate with an executor, um, and requiring this type of action. But in point of fact, every year, she's been taking properties and then going-
And selling.
No, I understand.
This is what she wants, too. Oh, absolutely, so, I mean, let's support these people that come and go.
I know something, you know, I know it came up the other night about the intent, so I just wanna bring it up. And that's, that's all I wanted to-
One more question for Dick, because he suits a little lot about this. Leonard Israel, Martin Israel, Cheryl Israel, Karen Israel, they all deceased?
That's what I was told.
Yeah.
I think they made all reasonable legal efforts to find them, correct?
Right, there was a four-month sur- uh, search.
Wow.
Took us down to Nor- uh, New Mexico at one point, trying to find someone, and then we found a death certificate for that person.
Wow.
It was a cousin that was trying to work it at the very end.
I changed my last name to Israel, I, knock on my door.
Oh, my God.
Well, then you owe us fifty thousand dollars in taxes.
We're laying a lot of Worcester.
Plus all the repairs on the roads and the sewer lines and the water line.
Alright, can I get a motion?
Make a motion that, uh, the board place items AR, AS, AT, referencing the acceptance of the deeds of parcel, as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion anymore? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And our big finish? What are we doing?
Recall placeholder?
Yep.
I think we don't have any language to look at. Um, I think there's a lot of guidance provided by the Mass Municipal Association, particularly pertaining to the other two hundred or so communities that have recall provisions in place. I think it's something that if we decide that we wanna discuss, I think the chair you had indicated last meeting, that you'd be willing to put this on a future agenda for discussion. We could, if it's something the board is interested in, ask our legal to come up with some language that best fits our town, based on best practices, and just, um, if it's something we wanna move forward on for the spring, we could do that. I mean, realistically, I know in town, there are folks looking to get together a petition, which has a lower threshold in the spring, so it might actually be useful, because knowing how these things work, the public petition is not gonna be particularly, uh, perhaps, uh, what the board would like to see, so maybe it's something that we can come up with some language that the board's comfortable with prior to that, if the board wants to go that route. And if not, it's the board's decision, so I'm more than fine removing it off of, uh-
Well, it wasn't placed.
Well, yeah, or, right.
The only thing before us for this agenda is to place it or not. There's nothing to place.
Well, again, this was brought up a couple of months ago. I, I would've liked something to place there in terms of best practice, but if it's something that we're serious, we wanna have a conversation about, let's get it on an agenda for the future. Let's have a conversation, and we can vote whether it's something we wanna move forward on.
Sounds reasonable.
Motion? Is that a motion?
There's no motion necessary, it's not placed.
Well, no, it's, but a couple of these where we said, we're not placing it because we're pushing it forward, that would-
Motion revisit.
You took that motion, and you're committed to have it at a future meeting.
No, to discuss it.
Motion to take no action on item AU.
Well, the way you worded it, oh.
Motion to discuss item AU at a future meeting and revisit in the spring.
Second.
You like that one? You okay?
I already seconded it.
Oh, six and one half, it's fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Is there any more business to come before the board?
Um, a motion to sign the warrant pending any cl- uh, language changes made in council that are solely clerical and not substantive.
Circle back real quick before we-
No, no, wait, we need, can I have a motion to sign?
Motion to sign.
Pending clerical changes.
Pending clerical changes.
Second.
No more F-two-fifties.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Hook circle back on this item?
Sure.
Whether members of the board be interested in representing?[1646.02]